Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled work session for Monday, April 1st, 2024, for the Haverford Township Board of Commissioners. Mr. Berman, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Gondick.
President.
Commissioner Forrest D. Grubb.
Here.
Commissioner McCluskey.
Here.
Commissioner Cavender.
Here.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner McCollum.
Here.
Commissioner Trombetta.
Here.
Commissioner Holmes.
Here.
Chief? (inaudible) I bless America. As I said, this evening is our regularly scheduled work session where we consider next week's agenda items as well as take the time at this meeting to hear and invite special presentations. And today, we welcome Kate Ferry of KRF Environmental LLC, who will be providing for us an analysis and summary of the curbside composting study. Ms. Ferry, where's yours? It's Ferry. There you are. Oh, but by way of introduction, Joy Baxter will be appearing in the position of Kate Ferry first, and the floor is yours.
Sure. So my purpose here is just to remind you that Kate Ferry is presenting as part of the USDA grant that we got for expanding composting in the township. And so there's many different parts of this grant. So the first thing is, the biggest part of that was hiring a consultant to do this assessment. So that's what you'll be hearing next. What I want to point to is that there is money to implement some of these desired, whatever your desired actions are, there's some money to do it. So how much? So the whole grant requires some type of matching. So far, all of that has been from existing salaries or volunteer hours. We think that up to $33,000, about $33,500 will be remaining, based on our projections, to implement whatever you guys want to do. About $70,000 won't require any addition, no mashing funds. The other money either will require some matching funds or more of our effort, whatever that might be. So just, you can get a lot of things. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter. Ms. Ferry, bad introduction.
All right. So I am Kate Ferry. Thank you for having me from KRF Environmental, and I was hired by the township to analyze costs and scheduling around beginning a township-wide curbside food waste collection program. And I also happen to be a resident of Haverford Township for the last 43 years, give or take. As a professional engineer, I've worked with the PA Department of Environmental Protection and lots of PA municipalities around the state for over 20 years to reduce solid waste, start recycling and composting programs, and try to make more effective waste management programs. Over the past few months, I've contacted municipalities around the country, industry professionals, local food waste haulers, local composting facilities, to gather information to help Haverford make the best possible plan to move forward. I've prepared a report that has much more detail than what I'm trying to get through tonight very quickly, and more Excel sheets than you could ever want to see, the databases for all of my assumptions and estimates. This presentation is just a broad overview of my findings and recommendations, but I'm happy to answer any questions on the details at the end of my presentation. All right. So the intent of Haverford's food waste collection program is to help meet the goals of the Climate Action Plan that was signed by you in 2021, to reduce carbon emissions, to work toward reducing Haverford's solid waste by 20% by the year 2035, and to provide a service to the township residents. So municipalities across the country are implementing food waste collection programs, and they are achieving the results that Haverford wants to see. So that is hopeful. Based on conversations with many municipalities, I've estimated participation rates for the first five years. You can see on this graph on the top, the percent of township households participating, estimated to increase by about 7% each year that the program is in existence, maxing out around 35% to 40% of households. It's based on data. At an average rate of seven and a half pounds of food per household, I've estimated the amount of tons that we would get weekly and annually from the program. You can see here the maximum we would get. Let me highlight. I don't want to. Let's see. I know there's a lot of numbers, so I'm just going to try to show you here. So this number here is the tons that I estimate we would get at full participation, and that's about 7% waste diversion. So not quite getting to that 20% additional, but that doesn't obviously include recycling and yard waste. Also, notably, every time we add a service for residents, that does have a cost, right? Food waste, oh, is it not?
This is a laser pointer.
Oh, thanks. I love that. I teach classes, and I'm always doing this. I'm not tall. All right. Thank you, Larry. I appreciate that. If I do this, can you see what I'm pointing to?
We count, and the audience counts.
Okay, great.
We've all read it, so.
Okay, okay. So food waste collection is not a money-making scheme, just so you know that. But as you can see, a reduction in waste going to Covanta, the incineration facility in Chester City, obviously does reduce tipping fees, which at maximum participation, we might see $100,000 reduction in tipping fees, which will go some ways to funding part of this program, and there are other ways to fund the program, which I'll talk about. It also results in less megatons of carbon emissions, which you can see here. And I was, as part of this contract, I was asked to look at the effects of a pay-as-you-throw system. If you're not familiar with a pay-as-you-throw system, it's basically structuring waste collection like any other utility. The more you use it, the more you pay. So for example, somebody throwing away two cans of trash is going to be paying more than somebody throwing away one can of trash per week. And this structure is not only more equitable, but it also encourages higher rates of waste diversion, whether that's to recycling or composting or yard waste. There are simple ways of implementing a pay-as-you-throw structure, like if you're familiar with Lower Marion Township's structure, and they are discussed in the report. Municipalities with a pay-as-you-throw structure often see diversion rates of around 40%. So you can see here, under a pay-as-you-throw structure, we would have more tons of waste diverted, a higher percentage of diversion, and, like I said, 40%. So some of this increase in diversion not only comes from additional food waste diverted, but additional recycling, which we would see. And then obviously, more savings on tipping fees at Covanta. Aside from these calculations, I did not include pay-as-you-throw in the estimates and options per the scope of the contract. All right. So based on conversations with many municipalities collecting food waste across the country, and conversations with haulers and composting facilities in this area, I've outlined aspects of what I believe is the most effective collection program available to us, with the goal of diverting as much as possible with a low rate of contamination. So we're trying to get just food waste in the food waste collection, not plastic and trash. Unfortunately, due to the method of biodegradable waste processing available in this region, we cannot combine yard waste with food waste unless the yard waste is first processed into two inches or less. So a lot of other areas will combine yard waste and food waste, but for now, Haverford has to collect yard waste and food waste separately. Most municipalities agreed that free opt-in participation garnered the most uncontaminated waste diversion. Ongoing education and advertisement of the program also significantly affected success. The closest composting site to Haverford is My Kitchen Harvest at Lynn Villa, which accepts all the items listed here. I don't need to go over them, you can read them. The Lynn Villa site operator has said that currently they do have the capacity that we are projecting, or capacity for the volume that we're projecting, so they'd be able to accept our food waste. And hauling to other sites was costed out and assessed, but Lynn Villa provides the lowest cost, best option for us right now. Residents who opt into the program can be provided with a two-gallon indoor bin for compost, and then a five-gallon or larger bucket for outdoor. A starter pack of liners often helps that are compostable. And as you can imagine, a five-gallon bucket has to be very tightly closed to keep critters from getting in. So during collections, this five-gallon bucket has to be carefully opened and carefully closed, because, you know, it's not going to be completely clean. So that can take some time. Now, I also have on the bottom here, you can see this can has a latch on it. That does save time, but it is more expensive. So I recommend purchasing these if we're able to get grants to fund them. Otherwise, it's going to be a cost-benefit analysis at the time, whether or not it's worth it. They are more expensive. Residents who opt in are contacted weekly via text to remind them of their pickup day, to educate them on correct composting procedures, alert them to a special item collection like pumpkins in the fall, and provides a way for residents to communicate with the collector to ask questions or report problems. Weekly pickup results in the greatest amount of diversion. Biweekly is an option, some places use it, but weekly pickup allows for food like meat and dairy to also be collected. Those are things you don't want sitting for two weeks, but one week is okay, and Lynn Villa does accept those materials. So also for weekly pickup, if somebody calls to complain, which, as you all know, any time change happens, someone is going to call and complain. That's human nature. It's a great opportunity, when you have weekly pickup, to tell that resident that they should opt into food waste, because then all the smelly stuff in their trash that they don't want to keep for, you know, two more days can go in the food waste. So it also encourages food waste program participation. So this is the form of food waste collection program that's recommended, whether Haverford does it in-house or has a third-party hauler. All right. I costed and assessed lots of different scenarios. I am an engineer, and I love spreadsheets. So I tried to get it down to a very small spreadsheet right here. I costed out third-party hauler, weekly and biweekly, in-house, weekly and biweekly collection, using existing staff, using existing equipment, using new staff, using new equipment, hauling waste to Lynn Villa, hauling waste to other facilities, hauling it in combination with yard waste. In my assessment, the best result for this program is actually a combination of using third-party haulers for the first year or two, and that's shown up here. And you can take a look at the costs, and that would be an increase on the trash bill for each household. So beginning with third-party haulers allows the township time to apply for grants to cover trucks, bins, buckets, education, info stickers, software. Collecting in-house is a less expensive option, but it's even more less expensive, or it's even lesser expensive if we get grant money. And that grant money, often I've seen with other townships, comes from the Section 902 DEP grants. And I don't know if you've ever applied for one before, but they love to cover things that involve composting and food waste. So I do think you have a good chance of getting one of those. So when going out to bid for a third-party hauler, the township can request specifics. What kind of bucket? Or will the township provide the buckets? What kind of communication styles? That way, you can structure the program you want so that when you transition to in-house, it will be more seamless, because you will have created the program you want. And the benefit of using third-party haulers is the ramp-up, not knowing how many participants there are going to be. You don't have to retool your equipment and labor force based on that at first, and you would inherit an already educated participant base once you transition to in-house. These third-party haulers are excellent at educating, and they've been doing it for years, so we benefit from their experience starting this program. There are numerous ways to fund this program, so don't worry. The Section 902 grant definitely is number one in my mind. That grant can offset capital costs like trucks, buckets, bins, root optimization software. They're typically offered once per year, and you can apply the next, I think the next 902 grant is due May 10th, I want to say, but you can apply every year, and if you don't get it one year, you can use almost the same application and apply the next There are other grants that may become available, so I've listed those in the report from the USDA, the EPA, the DVR PC. So the township should monitor those opportunities as well. The cost savings realized by a reduction in tipping fees at the trash incineration facility, as I've said, will offset program costs. We have this remaining $33,000 that can be spent to purchase bins, buckets, and stickers for the first 1,000 participants, and the in-house requirement for that can be our very own Alexis DeSanti doing grant application writing for the 902 grant. I would also recommend a nominal increase of 10% or 15% in the yearly trash fee, which is now $283, significantly lower than some of our neighbors. This fee is charged to each household every year, so increasing it by $28 to $42 would cover the cost of the entire program, and it would allow for Haverford to meet those goals that we stated. Here's an outline of what I recommend for Haverford Township. So first, this truck up top. So when I mention trucks, I have gone over what would be best. An F-350 with a bed insert that dumps with a loader arm is the best thing. It can also get in and out of that Lynn Villa site a lot easier than a trash truck. And then when I talk about root optimization software, you can think of something like your Amazon driver might have. You know, you see the, your Amazon thing is being delivered. That would be something like, your food waste is being picked up tomorrow, but also with the option for the resident to contact the hauler and ask questions or report problems. And then on the hauler side, they would see a list of the pickup locations, and if you're using a pay-as-you-throw program, they would even see, you know, this person has paid for two cans of trash per year, you know, per week. This person has paid for one can of trash per week. And the root optimization software will also make their roots more efficient, faster, and they'll be able to pick up, you know, only those streets that they need to. And the budgets that I have allows for an in-office staff member to manage the root optimization software and the messaging 20 hours a week. So I've set that aside as well. So first, we would go out to bid for a third-party hauler this summer, and with two options, weekly, biweekly, and also the option to extend one or two years. That way, if the bids come back for weekly and it's too expensive, we can go with biweekly. Weekly is my recommendation, but while we're putting out to bid, we might as well do an option. Doing it this early allows for hauler selection to happen, and then the hauler to ramp up their operations to handle the volume of the township that they estimate. It also allows for communication between the hauler and the township, and it also allows for time for the township to make decisions on budget in order to fund the program. Meanwhile, also, the township can apply for grants, and they can try to fund that in-house collection eventually, but grants take a while, as you probably know. So after receiving the hauler bids and choosing a hauler, the township can start advertising the program, and they can collect a participant contact list for when the program begins. In the program I'm estimating will begin in March 2025, that is recommended by haulers and municipalities, either start in the fall or the spring, because the winter, people don't want to go out in the cold, and the summer, people don't like the smell of their food waste. So starting in March, it sets us up for success, and it also allows the commissioners to decide in January for the new budget to increase the trash fee 10% or 15%. With or without grants, the township should purchase root optimization software. Hands down, the township should seriously consider going to once-per-week trash. It is, by all calculations, money-saving, it reduces carbon emissions by a ton. Running a trash route twice per week, running those very inefficient, like less than three miles a gallon trucks around again, is very inefficient. Using root optimization software allows for labor leveling, so that, I know we have a staff of 30 public works, you know, crew, but if we level that, we can save on some labor, and we can also have our routes be more efficient, and we also are able to change a lot easier. Root optimization software, like I said, has that communication with the client, and so if there's a, you know, a missed pickup, somebody can report it. If there is a holiday when trash won't be picked up, it can be easily communicated to residents. If there's a change in routes, like I'm suggesting, the drivers will be aided by root optimization software, because they have this in their truck, giving them the route, like you would imagine an Amazon driver has the route where they should go. So it allows for better pickup on the resident's side and the hauler's side. It would, if we go to once-per-week trash collection, it would double our carbon emissions reduction in this program already. It would maximize efficiency, save money. It would also really enable a pay-as-you-throw program to work and get maximum diversion. Based on the number of participants and grants awarded, the township should purchase food waste collection trucks, truck or trucks, depending on how many participants we have at the time. And if we've gotten grants already to cover three trucks, or if we haven't gotten grants, we purchase one truck, and then increase trucks as we continue to apply for grants and as the participant list grows. At minimum, obviously, we would have one full-time staff per truck. If we see, based on data, that we need more, we can hire a part-time or another full-time per truck. A maximum of three trucks would be needed. Trying to maintain the same pickup days, the same communication styles as the third-party hauler, we would use that root optimization communication software to do the same kind of communication that they're doing as well. Ongoing, the township should continue to advertise and educate. That is the hallmark, like, that's the cornerstone of a successful program, based on everybody I've talked to. You can consider adding apartment and light commercial collection. It's not necessary. It's not going to save the township any money, for sure. It will, it will be more expensive, but you can always decide if the program's a success and it's easy, or new opportunities become available. And if you haven't switched to a pay-as-you-throw program in a few years, I suggest you keep revisiting that as well. All right. For schedule, I just included this schedule. RFP preparation, grant applications, assessment, fee increase, program start date, program assessment, which is ongoing. You see, every three months, many municipalities will, every three months, every six months, assess their program and change it based on what they're seeing. So if residents are like, "These five-gallon buckets are too small," then maybe you start offering those 13-gallon. So having a flexible program allows for better success rates, and having the communication software allows for that flexibility. So the 10% trash service fee increase, or 10, 10 or 15, would be in January 2025. That gives you time before you start in March, the program for collection via third-party hauler. If the township can afford to choose the weekly collection program, I would recommend that you switch to once-per-week trash at that time. It's a really good motivating factor for people to also participate in food waste collection. The sooner we switch to one week, one, one day a week per trash, the sooner the township will see a reduction in cost and emissions. The township should monitor the participation every three months, so that after nine months of the program, three months before the year-end, you will decide, should we start in-house in March, or should we opt to continue this program one more year? It's important to get that data of how many tons, how many participants, what are the issues, and let the hauler know whether you will be continuing the contract early enough. All right. I would be happy to answer any questions you have. I talked fast. I apologize.
I had a question about the once-a-week. Is, years ago, when this was discussed, it was mentioned that we didn't have the capacity with the current, our current fleet of trucks to pick the trash once a week. Did you look at that at all? Would it involve us buying more?
No. So right now, we have 10 trucks picking up for what is essentially three days, so two full days and then two half-days, because then we have recycling. So we have 10 trucks working three days to do two collections. So if we change the routes to be, you know, one truck would have a, sorry, a smaller route. So if this is their area now, this would be their area, spread over three days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and then they would be able to do a smaller route, but it's three days of those. And so the amount of trash that they would pick up and the need to go back and forth to Covanta would be about the same, because they have a smaller area to collect trash in.
And would the savings to going to once a week be enough to cover the cost, additional cost of doing the food waste?
That really depends on the labor. So you do have a cost savings of about $40,000, at least in gas, I believe, from what I remember. But then there's the labor, and that's the large cost. So I know currently of 20 full-time and 10 part-time. I believe that some of those part-time could go away, but I also think that what could happen is that the, you know, if you do not have five of those part-time staff, that the other five part-time staff who stay could be made full-time, just because, you know, paying people a living wage, like, you know, with benefits would be desirable, but that's up to you. So if you were to get rid of five part-time people, that would be a cost savings, but if you made the other five part-time people full-time, it might not be a cost savings.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question. In terms of the going to trash once a week, and in terms of laying off our trash throwers, have you had any conversations with our Public Works Department about the feasibility of that?
I, I have talked with Dan a couple times. I know when I tried to contact him some more, he was out of work. So I've had some conversations with him. I know- with him. I know that he doesn't prefer to change any, you know, part of the program, but he's said, you know, "Well, I'll do what I have to do." So I think that he's, yes, I've talked with him. I've also been, you know, I've talked with lots of municipalities and public works and some people are more willing to be flexible and change programs than others. Sometimes, you know, our job as leaders is just to make the right decision, whether everybody agrees or not. That's always tough, but somebody's always going to complain. I think that if there were root optimization software, it would make the changing of the routes a lot smoother, and since the root optimization software hasn't been used yet, it's hard to realize, maybe for Dan, how easy it could be to start changing.
And does the software exist?
Oh yeah, I have in the report two great examples. You can do demos of them. They're very easy to use. So they have, it's $50 per month, per vehicle, so you can put them on 10 vehicles if you wanted to, and it's not very expensive. I actually have it costed in there.
So it's the cost of, that is factored into your numbers? But in terms of the upfront costs that you have or the ongoing costs that you have in the five-year program, where are you, where are you sourcing your labor costs and where are you sourcing your truck costs from?
The labor costs, I got information from Dan about labor, like a spreadsheet listing per-hour costs and then also insurance, benefits. So I made basically a per-hour that included all the benefits. So if they're getting paid $20 an hour, but actually benefits are really $21 an hour equivalent, so their price would be $42 an hour. So it was based on Haverford's actual benefit package for part-time and full-time staff. And as far as trucks, I made sure that all of the equipment that I was costing out was the same type of equipment that Haverford uses, for example, Ford trucks. Like, I didn't look at any other type of pickup truck because I want the maintenance crew to be able to work on the same brand of equipment that they're already working on. So when I looked at larger trucks, I was looking at the International and the Leech bodies, because that's what we currently use in our trash trucks. So all of those costs came from, I'm using the equipment that we have, I costed out the equipment based on current costs of those items, like contacting manufacturers.
I have a question. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, putting a lot of food waste on the curb? I know you talked about the lids and how important it is to seal it, but, I mean, there's going to be a failure rate, and what, does it tend to attract rodents, or like, what are the downsides to some of that, to putting food waste, you know, lining the street?
Yeah. So surprisingly, when I talked to all these municipalities, that was not a common issue. I thought it would be. I thought smells would be a common issue, I thought vectors would be a common issue, but I think when you make the mistake once or twice, you really learn to not make that mistake again. So, you know, when they make a mistake of not closing a lid tightly, the one who is really, you know, feeling the pain is the homeowner or the household. So they don't see the, those issues in an established program. Obviously, I mean, when I order, like, chocolate bars to my house, the squirrels get it before I do. So there's no question that that will definitely be an issue if somebody doesn't close their lid, but, but ongoing, I think it's something that you learn pretty quickly. And the haulers learn that when they put that back at the curbside, it really has to be sealed. So they always do a good job, the third-party haulers that I've talked to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I can speak with some authority, having done this now, I guess for about two years, that it is not an issue with animals or, and I have really criminal squirrels eaten through trash cans, but the square can that we use has survived several years. Nobody's chewed through it, and then I just put a metal can over it, a short metal can with a lid, and that, that can sit outside sometimes for weeks before, before it gets traded out. I just want to confirm, Ms. Perry, your, your recommendations to us about, about composting in general are not, do not rely upon us committing to one-day-a-week trash collection or any of these other operational seismic changes that you're suggesting to this immovable board? Are they?
No, that is a great question, and they are not. So this program can, can happen whether you go to once-per-week or not, because I am recommending a dedicated staff with dedicated equipment. So the 10 trucks can continue to operate as they are, and it won't affect what's happening. And the pay-as-you-throw, again, it, it doesn't have to happen, but both of those things, if they do happen, will increase the success of the program, increase the diversion rate, and increase the carbon emission reduction.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Perry?
State, did you have statistics on number of residents who self-compost?
I believe there's about 2%, and that's not from me, that was actually in the RFP that I responded to. I believe Joy got that information beforehand, and it was about 2% of residents were home composting.
And I guess going back to the carbon emissions, if we didn't cut it to once a week, we are putting more trucks on the road, though, aren't we?
That is right. So I did really want to use the F-150 electric, but the payload, like, the amount of weight you can have in the bed is limited in the electric, and so you have to go with an F-350. They don't have an electric version, so unfortunately, it will be some gas, but not...
It's not the same as the trash trucks.
Right, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
One last quick question, and you said we're at 2% now, but your plan, if I, if I saw that correctly, is based upon getting to 30-some percent in five years?
Yeah, 37. So it was between 35 and 40 was generally what municipalities saw. The 7% increase was based on Media Borough who started, they had a 7% increase each year that they've done the program, and similarly, a lot of programs see pretty steady increase each year as they open up, you know, you don't just have an open, like, enrollment, because that's a lot of work. You have, you know, you're accepting participants to opt-in, and then you start in March or you start in September with the new group of people. So that increase in participants is pretty steady as programs around the country have started up. So, yeah, was that, I feel like you asked another question and I didn't answer it.
No, that was the only question I asked, was just the 2 to 37%.
Yeah, yeah, and the 2%, so there's 2% that are home composting, and then there are another 2% that are curbside composting. That was, you know, information that was in the RFP. Yeah.
I have a question. Is there any, how would we make the transition from our current mode of trash fees to the pay-as-you-go program? I'm a little unclear about that, and it seems like a great way to incentivize people to participate, so could you explain that a little bit more?
Sure, no problem. The way I recommend it is a hybrid program, which is the same that Lower Marion does. So they have, on their website, three levels. You can have a very small can of trash once per week, you can have two normal-sized cans of trash, you can have three or four normal-sized cans of trash, and these cans are 38 gallons. So also, extra benefit is when you have pay-as-you-throw, it's, it's a set amount, so you're not having our trash collection crew pick up these 96-gallon cans and hurt their backs. It's just a little more structured, but what they do is, at the beginning of every year, they just have a form residents fill out, and they're enrolled in the standard program, which is the medium program, which I think at this point is around $400-something, and that's two 38-gallon cans of trash. If they were to opt-in at a lower level, then they would pay a lower amount. So their yearly trash fee would be assessed once a year based on what they do, and then opt-in for next year. It happens once a year, so you decide for the whole year, "I'm going to do one small can, or I'm going to do two cans," and you just make it happen. So it's, it's pretty low administration burden, very similar to the way we assess a trash fee once per year now, but they are opting either small, medium, or large and paying based on that. And, you know, people are throwing away three or four cans of trash, their trash fee is, I think, $580 per year, or something like that, in Lower Marion. And you can look, the website is really easy for Lower Marion's program. It's spelled out, and I'm sure they would be happy to say, you know, "These are the forms we use, here you go." It's...
So in your presentation, you were suggesting that there might be a 10% household increase starting next year?
Yes.
So if we wanted, if we went to a pay-as-you-throw system, then the people who throw out much more trash would maybe pay a higher...
Oh yeah, exactly.
A larger increase than the people who might opt for the smaller can, and that would be another way to incentivize this program?
Yes.
Got it?
Yeah. Yeah, pay-as-you-throw programs see such an increased diversion percentage because, you know, even if people are paying the same amount, it's like that competition, you know, feeling, like, "Oh, I want to, I want to pay less for my trash, so I want to throw away less." Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions for Ms. Perry? Thank you very much for this...
My pleasure.
Very informative report, and, thanks. And I look forward to more discussion on this. Next item on our agenda, Commissioner Committee reports. Any Commissioner Committees with anything to report? I'm sorry, what was that? Hearing none, I will...
Oh, yes, actually, I'm sorry, just a Commissioner Committee report. The skating committee met on March 12th to review the status of the architectural rendering that had been prepared for the upcoming renovation of the skating room involving locker room upgrades and so on.
Any other committee reports? Hearing none. Time for your monthly State of the Township address.
Thank you, Commissioner. Chief's report for March 2024. We had 20 criminal arrests, two juvenile arrests, 154 traffic citations, five non-traffic citations, 44 written warnings, and 616 parking tickets. We had one sex offense at the 2000 West Chester Pike was a nursing home. Patient reports said a, in decent assault by a staff member, it's being investigated by detectives. We had one motor vehicle theft. Jeep Patriot was stolen from a parking lot at 1901 West Chester Pike. Officers observed the vehicle nearby and arrested the adult female who, who took the car. We only had four thefts from vehicles this year, this, this month. Yeah, I shouldn't even said that, so I know it's going to happen next month.
There's going to be 25 of them tonight.
500 Block of South Eagle shattered window to 2017 Optima of the vehicle, serum column was not tampered with, and there are the vehicles that are being stole in Philadelphia. Police Department is also giving out serum locks for those because of the rash of those thefts. Lotter Country Club, a unlocked white Explorer was, was entered, credit cards were taken, and two TD bank cards and a Citi Bank card. 1800 Block of Robinson Avenue, a license plate was removed from a Dodge Ram, and the 1300 Block of Marlin reports a theft of her license plate from a 2011 Ford. We had two vehicle, two bicycle thefts, one in a Harvard College, and the second one was an electric scooter taken from the middle school. We had three K-9 usages assisting Newtown Police. West Chester Pike Route 476, we're our police department for a traffic stop where drugs were found in the vehicle. And 2700 Block of Overbrook Terrace for possible burglary in progress, where K-9 Bodie deployed and found the house secure. That's my report, Commissioners.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for the Chief?
Thank you.
Okay, next week, we will be considering a number of things. We will be promoting one of our officers to Sergeant. That is for our consideration next Monday. We will also be considering our ordinance P5 2024. This will be our second reading of an ordinance addressing amusement devices and Chapter 182 zoning clarification that relates to vape shops and tobacco sales.
Yeah, I just have one question. I wasn't here last month. I wonder, Mr. Walker, can you clarify me, for me, what's the difference between a game of skill and a mechanical amusement device?
So a mechanical amusement device is a definition that's currently in the code and usually requires a permit to have. A game of skill is a subsection of a mechanical amusement device. So mechanical amusement device is a ski ball machine, I'm not going to read them all, pinball machines, virtual reality games, any bag-throwing, rolling, or kicking games, dartboards, golf simulators, and one of the things that were added to that list is games of skill or skill games. So games of skill, it's its own defined definition, which is defined, again, as those casino-like machines. So that's a subsection.
Neither of those can be in a smoke or vape shop, but you can have up to three of them in a convenience store, or is...
You, you can have up to three mechanical amusement devices, but not a game of skill machine.
Okay, which are the more of the casino-type of...
Correct, and that's actually, I believe, what is in the code currently for mechanical amusement devices. The idea is eventually, you don't, when does a convenience store turn into a pool hall or turn into an arcade? And the number was three in the code, so that was the way it was. Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on that ordinance? We will also be considering, for the first time, an amendment to our Chapter 4 Administration of Government to provide criteria and a process for naming township property and establishing a township property naming committee. Commissioner Trompeta, did you want to address this for a moment?
Sure. The ordinance that this board will be considering next Monday was developed through a subcommittee that you designated with representation from this board and from the Township Administration. It really just seeks to ensure that we have a fair, uniform, and consistent process for naming township property while recognizing the contributions and heritage of individuals and organizations within our community. I can go into more detail, but this proposed ordinance establishes a criterion process for naming township property. It also establishes a township property naming committee that's tasked with reviewing naming proposals and making recommendations to this Board of Commissioners, or to a Board of Commissioners. It outlines the committee's membership and powers and duties in the naming process, and, again, this proposed ordinance establishes criteria that can be considered, you know, as we're considering naming a piece of township property, but would include something like submitting naming applications, including petition requirements and timelines for review. The Commissioners Parks and Recreation Committee and the Township's Parks and Recreation Board have both reviewed this proposed ordinance and have provided affirmative recommendations to this board. Happy to answer any other questions or...
Are, is the ordinance as currently drafted, take into account or has considered the comments of the Park and Rec Board and the Park Subcommittee?
We have. We considered it both when we started drafting this ordinance, so the Parks and Recreation Board had recommended... So the Parks and Recreation Board had a recommended process previously that we used as part of our drafting of this ordinance. And then again, we sought their input and they did provide affirmative recommendation for this current proposed language.
I'm sorry, please.
Possibly a question for Mr. Walco. One of the things that came up when we presented this to the park board was we were asked whether this included park benches, which we did not feel, we thought that was separate, but do we need to put that in the ordinance itself? Or right now people can purchase a park bench with a plaque on it in memory or?
I think arguably it would. If there is some clarity desired for benches or anything that's sort of minor or movable, you may want to make that more clear in the definition of township property.
Okay.
Just so there's no issue about that in the future. It does refer to other property or facilities. It also refers to improvements on the property. Again, whether it's a movable bench or a permanent fixture, it could get sticky. And whether or not it should go through this process might be something to address.
I think that's something we wanted to avoid. So maybe.
Because with a park bench, you wouldn't want to have to have people like sign up for like a whole bunch to approve just a park bench.
That wasn't the intent of this ordinance, but it is just to, you know, tighten it up. Maybe we need to put that in it.
And again, I'm not sure what the intent would be, but I guess if it's a more of a fixture or a permanent improvement that's unable to be moved as opposed to movable, non-fикture, that's something that can easily be delineated in the definition of township property.
Does this go for, and this is just something too, like if you plant a tree and put a plaque there, would that be the same thing?
Again, I think arguably it could be seen as that. And I would recommend if that's something that wanted to be excluded, that would be expressly excluded for township property. I mean, benches and trees are obviously are common namesakes for municipalities. So I mean, you may even want to address stones, paving stones.
Yeah, I know there's exceptions and things like that that are, some might come up and stuff, so.
Just to follow up on that, I guess, in terms of the benches and everything. I know obviously we have a lot of sports fields. The sports fields are maintained by a lot of private organizations. This would apply to anything going on in those fields regardless of who erected it. I know that some of the, some of the ball, some of the sports leagues, you know, have pavilions that they've dedicated in the past and so on. So I'm assuming that any, you know, attempt to dedicate a pavilion or a fence or a scoreboard or anything like that would have to come through the township at that point regardless of who built it. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
Well, I think there might be a difference between something dedicated and something named after that person. But certainly if there's a desire to name a pavilion after a person, likely then have maybe a plaque identifying that person. Yeah, that would have to come through this. Certainly that would be township property.
Okay.
But again, if it's just dedicated in someone's name, but it's just still township property and not named after the person, then that doesn't really, it's not a naming then of assigning a name to that pavilion.
Yeah, I would think, so, you know, if there's a scoreboard and it's the property of the Little League, it's not township property. So it seems that that would not be covered in this.
It's out.
It would be an improvement on township property. Yeah, it's on township property.
That's why, that's why it's the question is because it sits on township property. And so the way I read this is it would be under our purview.
Would it be more?
Again, I think it would be under the purview, but you know, just having a Little League base scoreboard without a name, it wouldn't fall under because it's not being named. If someone also then wanted to call that, you know, Cal Ripken Jr. Baseball.
So if.
Then that would fall under this.
If a league, and I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page. So if a various league wanted to, you know, commemorate past members or, you know, past presidents, something like that for their hard work, and they had a little ceremony and informally they called something after that person's name, it wouldn't fall under this. But if they wanted to make it like officially designated, you know, the Brian Gondek Pavilion at Steel Field, then it would have to come through us. And I don't.
That would never happen.
I don't, I don't need, I don't need a pavilion anywhere. But if, so you're saying that.
I'll vote on that Monday. I'm in.
But you're saying, but you're saying the difference is the formality of the meaning. In other words, basically a plaque or not a plaque. Am I hearing you correctly?
I'm not sure. I mean, so I think, you know, Saturday, there's going to be a field named after Mr. McGarrett. And it's going to be an official township naming. Now, I don't know, if informally the league had called it McGarrett Field and the township, I would defer Commissioner Trombetta here. What do you?
I'm thinking, let me just read out the definition of township property. So it says, real property owned or controlled by Haverford Township and/or improvements or facilities located on property owned or controlled by Haverford Township, including but not limited to buildings, rooms, recreation areas, parks, fields, open space, streets and other property or facilities or parts thereof owned or controlled by the township as deemed appropriate by the Township Board of Commissioners. So, I mean, my thought is we can definitely improve the definition to, for example, say that we, you know, this does not include benches, stones, maybe a small placard. But I, I would think if this is on township property, something like a scoreboard would be, would have to go through this naming process. And so perhaps again, we can strengthen the definition a little to make that clear.
Because now like the fields are called like Field A, B, C. And this one will be changed, Field C will be changed to McGarrett Field. That's more for the league than for the town, township in like a way. Like that's what.
But a field is township property as far as I'm concerned. So I would be saying that yes, you would need to go through the naming process for a field.
Well, yeah, I just, I think the danger is, you know, I think everyone here is probably excited and happy for Brooklyn to have the ceremony and to name it after Commissioner McGarrett. The issue, framing it in that, that way, I think creates a problem for how we're going to create this ordinance. I mean, the goal should be, you know, if something was being named, something that we deemed not appropriate or something that we didn't want, that's why we would set up, we set up these baselines to sort of create some control over how groups would use our organization. Because it's not always going to be, you know, a group that, you know, has a history with Commissioner McGarrett and wants to name it that. So I, I think it's, the purpose is to create some sort of structure and control over property that we own and we represent to the public that we own. So.
Yeah. No, no, I think this is a good, 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 good idea. And we do need this so we don't run into any issues down the road. I think this is a good plan. So I just wanted to say, tell you that as well.
Yeah, I would indicate that I think that this is something that's probably long overdue. And it's definitely something that's positive for us to have on the books. And I, you know, I thank Commissioner Trombetta and those that worked with her in terms of kind of putting this together and getting it kind of, you know, right to the finish line. And hopefully we'll put it across the finish line on Monday. I just, I just wanted to make sure I was, you know, understanding the contours correctly. I guess the only other question I would have, and this is for Mr. Walco, is, you know, obviously this includes, you know, kind of criteria for what we're looking for. It also includes some exclusions. In your opinion, as our solicitor, you feel comfortable that this ordinance has written passes, you know, quote unquote constitutional muster?
Yes, the township is controlled, controls its own speech as to what it wants to name its facilities. So it's not an open public forum. It's still public property and the township has that right.
Okay, thank you.
It's also good that the ordinance lays out in paragraph 4-1112, the procedures for naming the township property and that there are multiple steps that any application has to go through, including that applications have to come from the public sector, from local civic organizations or neighbor associations. And individuals may not apply. I think that's really important. And also that for a completed application, there has to be a petition with 100 signatures from adult residents. So I think there's a lot of layers to make sure that any naming that goes on in the township has common support and is going to have opportunity for public comment as well. So that, that part of this ordinance, I think, is really critical for this. So thank you for that work.
Sorry. Those are the two ordinances that are for our consideration next week. We will also have a few resolutions to consider. CDBG funding projects, Resolution 2374. There will also be a resolution relating to the Friends of the Grange for us to consider amending the constitution and bylaws of the Grange. And then finally, we'll also be considering the release of a maintenance escrow at Atherton at Haverford Reserve after 15 years, I think, is the, is the end of the escrow period. That's hard to believe, actually, when you think about that. We've also a number of contract awards. Minow and Austin?
Maybe we should, a brief comment about the Grange. So just so everybody else understands that the Grange to change their bylaws, it needs to come before our board for approval. They, the Grange Board has spent the good part of the past year updating their bylaws, which were quite out of date. I mean, they were written 50 years ago. So that's, the result of this work is really.
That long ago.
Bylaws that fit with the current structure of the Grange. The only one that I probably have an issue with is that the, one that states that township appointed representatives cannot serve more than two consecutive two-year terms, which the reasoning behind it was that no one on their board can serve more than two years. But I think that's putting an obligation on our board that we don't require of any of our other boards. And I mean, I guess we can. I would just say I probably would not vote in favor of that. We can, when we appoint people, we can take that under consideration. But it seems that that's an obligation, that's our choice. So we, I would have to agree.
That's certainly a, you know, an amendment you can make next week when we're considering the resolution. It certainly sounds reasonable.
I don't know, Kathy, do you want to comment on that?
I'm Kathy Parkinson. I'm president of Friends of the Grange. We can strike that. We could change that. I mean, I think we did that because all of the other officers, that was something that was put in for the other officers. But we are more than happy to change whatever you feel needs to be changed. It's no big deal.
Because you want them to stay, to stay for years and years.
We want you to stay forever and ever because once we have our hooks into you, we are never letting go.
Oh, I know.
As some of our volunteers are the original volunteers from 1974. And are still going strong. So, I mean, it's, it's fine with us. I think we were just trying to do it for continuity sake and it's no big deal.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Sorry, just running out where I was. Okay, so then we've got contracts to consider next week. School crossing signal improvements at Minow and Austin Road. Electric vehicle upgrades at the correct charging stations. We will do two-year traffic signal maintenance contract. We will be considering an inspection and cleaning contract for the sanitary sewer pipe in the area of Gulf Mill, Strathmore, Cathmere and Darby Roads. The Haverford Township Free Library will have change orders associated with the renovation there. Also for our consideration, for our consideration next week at the board level will be the appointments to the Historical Commission, the Vacant Property Review Committee and the Senior Citizens Committee. And we will be considering, we will also be proclaiming the 2024 Finland Exchange, which was a huge success and a lot of fun last Thursday morning as we kicked it off. And also a proclamation recognizing Arbor Day. Are there any of those things that any of my colleagues would like to raise or discuss at this point? We are, of course, always able to discuss them next week as well. Hearing none, I would ask my colleagues if we could, oh, I should have announced this. I'm sorry. Before the meeting started, the board met in executive session to discuss issues involving real estate and litigation. And I would ask my colleagues if we could have 90 seconds of executive session in the back after we, after we adjourn this meeting. So any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you all.